All right, I'm gonna go to call this meeting for the 702 on the 28th day. Which month is it? Anyone? March, yes. Okay, so here we all are. Who's here?
I don't know.
Him. Jessica Giles.
Victoria Romano.
John Lurk.
Also with us is Tom Myers, the zoning officer and code officer, Tammy Morse, the clerk, Warren, whose last name is?
Rick.
Wright, the deputy clerk. The applicant is here, as well as Colin from MRB and members of the public. Okay, first order of business is approval of this from the past meeting, which we found some last minute things that I wanted to look at, so they are not here. So we'll do that next time. I'll take them from the chair, I put them on there. Yep. I think I'm just gonna talk a little bit about where we are in the process. And I had mentioned, and Rick reminded me, that I sort of sent out this nice step-by-step of how the whole process works and how site management goes with zoning code and how it talks about subdivision review and all that. But I did not bring that up today, so we're not gonna go into that detail. But what I am just gonna sum up, in case, so we're all on the same page, is right now, we are still in the discussion phase, right? So next, we could expect some of the variances have been granted by the zoning board appeals for 1.4 parking spaces for the 25-yard front yard setback and the nursery school. They were waiting, the applicant had been waiting for that to then figure out what water mitigation would look like and final building placement and drawings and all of that. So presumably, when they do that, then we'll have a final preliminary plat to then approve and we can go through the steps. So between now and next meeting, why don't I follow up with that document that I did generate that sort of says how we might go about that? And there are some timelines within that for once this happens, then this happens. Interestingly enough, as you all know probably from having read it, there are those timelines that then say unless the applicant, in conjunction with the board, choose to extend this deadline. So it's, but they're there. So that's what I wanted to say, make sure we all knew about the variances. Okay, that was my update. So now I think that we're ready to discuss with the applicant where they are from their BZA determinations and what they have to bring to us today.
All right, well, good evening for the record Adam Walters from Phillip's side of representing at the neighborhood housing services. We've got a couple of things we'd like to discuss tonight. With the BZA approvals, we now have kind of a clear concept on parking needs as well as the setbacks. So we have got what I'll call preliminary conceptual revised plans that I think Ryan would like to spend a little time just walking you through, high level. With those approvals and the previous discussions we've had, Andy and this team are now deep into the engineering update, which is the stormwater analysis and accounts and all of that stuff. Our anticipation is submitting that probably about a week and a half, two weeks before your April meeting.
Okay.
So his target is to get it to me April 15th and we'll get everything submitted within a few days. I just like to go through it, make sure it's all consistent, everything's been updated. So we're shooting for April 18th or so.
Okay.
For new supplemental. We'll also obviously get that over to MRB and they'll start their analysis. I don't, I think it's safe to say we're not gonna have their analysis done by their April meeting.
That's pretty well correct.
We know. So I think we're looking at hopefully about a 30-day turnaround. That's typical for best terms with Tom and Lance.
Did you have a question at this time?
No, just stroking my head.
Okay.
All right. So we can expect a report back in traditional, I think, MRB review. They will do a list of comments and we will address those comments. What we've seen with MRB in the past, particularly in like our preliminary plat plan, is they will have an approval that says one of your conditions is to address all of their issues and then provide an update, updated plans with an explanation of how these issues have been addressed. So we're hoping that we're kind of leaning in that direction. It could put us in a position where you're perhaps ready to do something again.
Okay.
But one step at a time, of course. And we also committed to come back with building materials. So we do want to spend some time on that tonight. I did, just for purposes of discussion only, as a starting point. We typically will start, we talked about starting to think about conditions. And so I sent some documents to Guy and we sent some to you. We don't want to spend a lot of time on those tonight, obviously. We just want the client's ears.
Yeah, that's explained, I think we'll probably not spend any time tonight. It's in our minds, yeah, until I see them.
Yeah, okay, that was the only point, is to start to think through how those might look. Assuming we're good. To you, too. So those are the highlights. Why don't we ask Ryan to do an update on the plans and just give you a sense of where we're headed and see if there are any issues that we need to be thinking about as we move into proper design?
Yeah, probably at least Andy and some of the skilled additions, I apologize. Not much to report. There are a few updates, just to review, coming off of the BZA decisions to grant variances. All of the buildings are now showing a 25-foot setback from our setback, to be specific. Other additions that have been made to the plans as we work through preliminary conceptual. The four-saddle four-way units, both the two separate townhouses that are on lot 2 and the single townhouse that's on block 8, have had fences added to the rear and side yards depending on the where you did spread. So because they're townhouses, obviously the middle units only have rear, yard fenced in backyards, but those which are at the ends of the triplexes or the duplex in the case of lot 8 have fences that extend to encompass part of the side yard as well as the rear yard. So that is a change from what we showed before. It provides a little bit more defensive personal space, given that these are four-saddle units. Just to give a broad overview of the parking, once again, so we were granted variance of 1.4 spaces. The only lot that takes advantage of that reduction from the standard 2:1 two-spaces per unit is lot 12 with a total of 61 spaces. It's 1.4 times 46 minutes works out to 60.2, we rounded it up to 61 spaces. Just to clarify other nuances of parking spaces, lot 8 actually has an additional two-spaces beyond the 2:1 ratio. So there is a quality four-unit townhouse structure. There are actually 10 spaces provided on lot 8. The anticipation that everybody likes that front and kind of a sooner or later.
Could you just remind me, what were the 2:1, what were the 2:1 numbers of then and what were the numbers that you all proposed?
Can somebody do better, say better than I can? 46 times 2 would be?
92.
Okay, yeah, right. So originally, the apartment building had obvious parking lots on both sides with these design and building aids. And the variance was only for the affordable housing rentals. It never covered the marketway units or the affordable for sales. Those have always been two-year. So the number did come down, I believe it was from 92 to 61.
Right, and just to clarify, there are other affordable lots which we opt to actually voluntarily not to reduce the number. So for instance, there's affordable triplexing on lot 4, which is holding six spaces as opposed to reducing it to a 1.4 ratio. So there are six spaces for three units, 2:1. There are other minor changes that we are going to probably implement. As again, we're working right now through the stormwater and grading and small changes will likely occur from that. But at this point, largely what you've seen from the sisters reflective of what you've seen up until the point where they took the changes to a distance.
In terms of building placement, for example? And that would be true then from the February 21th draw that you presented us? Okay.
Any questions there?
I had one question. I think it came up at our last meeting. Given some of the water complications at that site, predictable, possibly unpredictable, but the major amount of trees being planted there, I think it was mentioned at the last meeting that they were the kind that love water, would absorb it well, contain it well, and deal with it. I know they can do all the job there, but am I imagining this or was that mentioned? That some of the species being planted there are actually very capable at absorbing groundwater?
Actually, I mean, as a general statement, right? Subzero-shaped trees are, some like water, right? 10 equals 10. So the species in particular that we'll be looking to, I mean, you can go back to the very early preliminary planting list that's been submitted to you. It's not changed since that time of submission, but it includes multiple species that are inclined to benefit lands thrive with root systems that are in wetter soils than drier soils. Insofar that there's a spectrum of tolerance and preference that species specifically.
Because a lady that lives in the neighborhood at the last meeting mentioned that the soils underneath are not particularly absorbent of water and will depend very much on what the trees can do. And I think she made a kind of a major point there, that we be careful that we do just that. You know, what we plant there actually can help.
The point that I made that I would reiterate, just the takeaway that I was trying to convey at the last meeting in making that statement is that if you look at the existing vegetative coverage of the site today, it's primarily field condition with select woody, larger woody tree shrub structure there. Insofar that we're much more equally distributed throughout the totality of the site, you know, a significant number of subzero-shaped trees, it is going to have an impact on the groundwater. They are going to take up water. I just had a black walnut kind of in my backyard you know, a few months ago, and my driveway's never been wetter than it is in the last four weeks. It had never been swept in all the time that I lived there, so.
And remember, the stormwater design rules do not take into account trees. So you don't get credit for trees. So stormwater design will actually pretend there aren't no trees. So again, we get what we think is a very manageable food system. Certainly way, way better than current conditions.
Sure. There's a black one called American something swamp white oak. That sounds promising.
Don't let them name it, Mr. Steve.
Willow trees, and I believe you mentioned willow last time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it, and we will.
And we know several septic systems that are impacted, just willow trees. Not that I'm encouraging, okay.
Any other questions on site design, if that would be moving to building materials?
Okay.
Are you here, okay? Jumping boards over here. Would you like to?
What's that?
Would you like?
Do you mind grabbing the?
Let's see, we're out here. Let's see. I guess one of the batteries. And there's one that has the materials all pulled out. Is that?
You have one, right?
There's no document that's been submitted that discusses building materials, right?
Nothing, no.
Okay, not like landscape document?
They're all labeled.
Right. And the metric study?
Yeah, do you remember there was in, I think in one of the elevation packet, there was one with materials?
The elevation packet, was that?
Yeah, isn't there one that lists all the titles of the materials, I thought?
I thought, and then I didn't find it.
Yeah, I remember we submitted the elevation to exactly.
Yeah.
Kind of going in the next round.
Okay, great.
With specific label.
Okay.
So, and I think you, they saw these last meeting, right? Okay, okay, so you got a general introduction. Looking at a cement board siding, clavberd, and some sort of B-boards, or looking at a vertical and horizontal pattern, vinyl windows, a architectural shingle. And I think we went over that last time, so I'll just cut to the samples. So part of the process is that eventually the project will be competitively bid. So you know, we're probably not going to have any specific product names today, but you know, this is an example of a vinyl window that in a lot of NHS projects, we've pretty much installed a vinyl window really low on maintenance. And the hardware is durable. We get great warranties on these window systems. Very low maintenance in terms of painting. We will look, we will be selecting, this will be in our specification, so even if we competitively bid it, we will be getting a simulated divided light, meaning the mountains that are in the windows are real, they're not behind a glass.
Okay.
And so I think that's an architectural feature that is pretty important in this kind of design.
Can we see that outward facing? That's the interior view, I can just, it's great. Thank you.
Yeah. The architectural shingle, we may or may not get Owens Corning. But I could put it here. You know, we are looking at an architectural profile and you know, we're anticipating that it is something in this slate color. So it would be sort of a, you know, grayish-blue kind of texture to it. The railings, we can't get a sample of exactly the railing that we are recommending, but this is, I can give you a catalog cut to show you the difference. So we're thinking less ornamentation, less decorative. So the cap and the base to these, to the column posts will probably be a profile like this. But the top rail and bottom rail, we're envisioning are more just rectilinear with aluminum post in the center. And this image is probably, you guys can pass it around. It's probably the closest to that, so you can see that the profile here is more rectangular. The post would be a darker aluminum post and then the caps are a bit. We are looking at a cultured stone for the base, the water table that runs around the buildings, at all buildings.
And the face of the common?
Cool.
Right, the face of the common, common room, what do we call it now?
The community, right, yes.
The community as well.
And we are envisioning a cement board material that's probably maybe the C.
Yeah.
And the, and we will.
How long have we been building with this, the siding?
Oh, 30 years. 30 years, yeah.
This is, looks like a pre-finished product.
Correct.
There, that's less than 30 years. Before, it was just a bare material that the contractor supposed to finish on.
And the rigidity issues we have with vinyl and vapor barriers and such enroding is not something that happens with this?
If it's installed properly, sure.
Hey!
If it's installed properly.
Yeah, and that's true vinyl, too.
Any material, honest to be.
Can lead to that.
If you install it properly, it can have issues.
Okay.
Have you looked into, I don't know how far this went. I dropped something off at the village today, possibly too late, which is that the, these shingles made by Tesla now contain or can contain up to 50, 60% of solar power where your roof actually becomes that. I also find, this is just a sample of the shingles, not the color necessarily, because the southwest-facing shingles that dark could cause, you know, a situation. But they do make, I wish I knew more about it, but they do make a shingle today that has solar capabilities in. Have you explored that?
Yeah, we looked into it, you know, about a year ago. At the time, it was still.
Not quite there.
Fairly new and pretty, but you know, my feeling is it might be cost prohibitive here, but I'd actually, you know, we'd love to look into it again. I'm not sure that we could afford it for this project, but you know, at another meeting, we could sort of share with you what we found on that.
And it might make sense to update our kind of our green design concepts because as we're now getting more through the final review process, the team's really starting to focus more on the actual construction and how things will be done.
So we're having a green design direct tomorrow to really kind of target our sustainable efforts.
Yeah, exactly the world is going, it's, it's catastrophic. It would be good to anything that can be done better that could help in any way that it can. So these, in other words, on this side are your choices?
Yeah, yeah, and right now, yeah.
For these brands, they're not.
For this brand, for this particular, but you're not committed necessarily to this particular brand?
Correct, correct. But we are, you know, we are thinking we would not throw it something that's drawn exactly the reasons that you're suggesting.
And these are self-adhering?
No, they're a three-tab shingle.
These do not, as they, they don't self-laminate as?
Oh, they do, they're mechanically fastened, but they also have, you know,
potential to fuse.
Well, that's how they're designed, okay.
Oh, yeah. And, yeah. And these are the choices, right?
Correct, correct.
And are these all available?
Yes, I think in all, any of those would be available.
So I would say anything that doesn't take a dramatic step towards too light or too dark would be probably just the way we look at that.
Yeah, we're thinking that, you know, that bluish-gray slate color.
Is this 30-year? Is this 30-year shingle?
I think, yeah, I think, I think that is.
Probably those on the back.
Yeah.
Okay, I would assume this looks to me like that sort of. 130 miles an hour wind resistance.
Okay.
No questions?
Oh, yes, I'm sure. Okay, so, so last meeting, Adam, sorry, could you say your name again?
Steve.
Steve, thanks, Steve. Okay, and I know you were here once before. So last meeting, we talked about the notion of the plastic railings and porches and knock integration about that. And so I'm seeing in front of me something that is that. Though this one, you said the uprights and the fencing and the railing that we saw in the document, oh, that's right there, there, remember?
Correct.
So this is not, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, so the sample, we really couldn't get a sample of exactly what we wanted. This was sort of the samples they had, so unfortunately had to rely on the catalog.
Sure, and Claudia mentioned that she would explore knock using plastic. Correct, maybe like we use a different term, use a classic.
Yeah, so we were talking about vinyl and vinyl has with it a really lightweight, plastique complication. If you've ever seen a.
Well, and experiential reality.
Some would say, but Trex, Trex is a different product. So Trex is a more heavy-duty, and Trex is often used as F-ing, as a replacement for wood. So this is a composite, then?
Yes.
It's a composite material, it's not, it doesn't quite have the plastic.
Okay.
Simulation.
That's a recycled, that's recycled material.
Partially, yes. Partially. So again, we're just kind of exploring options at this point, but coming out the last meeting, Trex was kind of suggested as a way to come at that.
And so what would the finish be on the aluminum?
It would be sort of a dark bronze color. And I didn't mention.
A powder finish, it would be sappy?
It's, where's the document I gave you? I think it's a. Let's see the.
Oh, you said gold?
Well, the other thing I want to say, too, is that, you know, I think this, one of the reasons we don't like this profile is it kind of looks like it's trying to be wood, but it doesn't come off as wood, which we envision all rails as white. And I think the white in a rectangular shape is gonna look like painted wood. You know, I think you're right, when you touch it, it's gonna feel like wood. But we're, you know, we partially want this building to look great for 30 years and it's zero maintenance. Like, we're not gonna get paint flaking, we're not gonna, it's gonna look, it's not gonna fade because it's white. And so it's essentially, you know, 25 years from now, it's gonna look personally like it does when it's yellow.
I was gonna make some comment about, I don't know any vessel that doesn't need maintenance after 30 years.
Yes.
What did you say?
I was gonna make a comment about, I don't know a vessel that doesn't need maintenance after 30 years, we have a body, I have to say, both, but I'd say.
So, we could get that.
Again, because we're seeing that, and the part of the conversation that you didn't maybe get to hear last time is that for our experience here in our village, this feels like institutionalization. Whereas a lot of the porches and homes that we've seen built don't have this kind of material, so we're trying to not feel like we're walking.
In the current homes, you think they're not using vinyl rails?
A ton, yeah.
Really?
You can totally say, no, just gonna go to XYZ street on number 65000.
No, I really, I love wood, too, you know, and so I'm not discouraging that at all. I think it does have just a lot to do with maintenance cycle and, but.
Not everyone loves to stay in their railing, I guess.
What's that?
Not everyone loves to stay in their railing.
Right, right.
I am curious, though, so can you think of another place where the aluminum post exists in the neighborhood, you can tell me or email me, and I'll quickly experience it?
Yeah, if you don't mind, for the next meeting, maybe we could have a follow-up and I could give you some locations, maybe some photos. Maybe do a sampling around these neighborhoods and say how much, how much vinyl metal we see and how much wood we see.
Great.
You know, and I agree, like some of the really old historic homes, of course, in a, you know, 150-year-old home, you probably might not want to put vinyl railings on, but yes.
You're very welcome to stop by at my house. I have 4-inch by 4-inch aluminum piers and I have stainless cables.
Okay.
And I expect them, I don't expect myself or anybody else, but I expect all that to be here 100 years from now. Sure.
I think one of the other, the lack or the absence of maintenance and the durability are big selling factors. I think one of the other things that was a downer for the vinyl is the toxicity of fumes in the event of fire.
Right.
And I don't know if there's anything that could be done about that.
Is this similar as far as if this ignites in some unfortunate way? Is it as toxic as some of our earlier made plastics?
Yeah, if it would, you know, burning vinyl is, is pretty bad. It's pretty bad. I mean, these buildings are sprinkled, fully sprinkled. And not all residential homes are fully sprinkled. You've seen, you know, you know, single-family homes go up and you see that black, you know, burning of the vinyl, but.
And, but didn't I hear you write when you described this kind of railing with a 30-year life expectancy? Is that it?
I, the warranty is 25 years.
Really?
There's, it's 10, it's 10 on the material finish and the overall, it's, it's got, you know, the warranties are a certain period on the finish, a certain period on hardware. It's not a total warranty for 25 years. It's, the general is like 10 for the.
Find that slightly alarming as a material to use today since Seneca Falls cannot absorb one more pound of debris? And nobody else wants it, the fact that unless it's recycled in some clever way? But that is a very short life expectancy. When you think that our painted or stained wooden rails on houses 200 years old have actually been there.
Actually, what we're replacing the most is pressure-treated wood.
Pressure-treated is?
We just went here, we did an evaluation of 98 units and it was the wood that we replaced, and we replaced it. that we replaced, and we replaced it all with Trex.
It's the worst building, especially the worst building materials out there.
And all of the wood we replaced with Trex, because this is gonna last a lot longer, and especially if you have ninety-eight apartments, or you have, every one of these units, there's forty-eight porches, forty-eight railings, at least on this one building, so, you could imagine staining and sand.
Metal or...
Or removing the wall and replacing them.
...on-dated metal should play a role in this. Maybe there is a better material. I find the fact that this lasts as little as that.
Well, wait a minute.
It's more...
Yeah, there's a difference between how long it lasts and how long it's oriented.
What the warranty is and how long it'll be there, but I still have some issues.
Right, but I, you have to, I live in a two-hundred-year-old house too, and the trees that grew that house and the three years they took to build it are why it's still here two hundred years later. You can't get wood like that. There's no wood available now that is going to last as long because it's fast-growth, and if it's pressure-treated, they've actually taken out all the chemicals that actually make it last.
It's pressure-treated, remember?
Yeah, pressure-treated, yeah.
When they've re-treated it.
Yeah, we did that.
Yes, and, and, well, I'll just add to that, that, you know, with wood, the other way that it wouldn't last that long is if you painted every five years, and that's not really...
What about aesthetics, not aesthetics aside, building material reality aside, what would you actually think of the, because as soon as you said the wire, not using the right-hand terms, you have upright aluminum posts and you have the coatings, but we see a lot of wide ones, for example, in four-fourteen, so you have safety barrier for children, public, but the view is largely uninterrupted. Do you think that would be aesthetically in keeping with this construction?
Absolutely.
Did you explore that possibility in terms of cost-effectiveness and it seems, I think it's not super stupid expensive. I think that's why a lot of places are doing it, and we did it once on a building project in Hector, but I don't remember what that cost twenty years ago, so.
The, the big thing with the cable railings is, one, you have to have the posts together, because especially when there's lots of kids that want to climb them, they'll loosen up fairly quickly, and there's hardware to tighten them up, but that's also a big challenge. I think hardware is a really expensive part of the whole thing. The cable isn't quite as fast, but you will have to get stainless hardware to match it.
My dog does a high wire act on it, and I have to occasionally tighten it, but it lasts forever, and it's good-looking, and it, yes, you do have definite now and then, but it isn't poisonous, it lasts forever, it's good-looking.
Well, I also think that it's, it sort of fits, if you acknowledge that the neighborhoods of Truensberg tend to reflect what the building theme is of the time that they're built, like every other place, we're pretty happy with this post-industrial world where we have breweries and reclaimed warehouses, right, so having that stainless steel thing in our houses, I think is somehow more digestible.
Okay, I, I actually disagree.
Okay.
But, I think, I mean, that feels much more kind of traditional and in keeping with the neighborhood and the characteristics, in my mind.
This image is acting like this one, probably more closely resembles a railing than we'd see that, because we're just being white with, with the metal.
With more metal.
With the metal.
Yeah, that does feel better.
Yeah.
That's what's in the metal.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
We're, we're getting into design here, but I'll, I'll throw one in too, that I've experimented with and been very happy with, even though it's pretty, what's the word? Basic. There's a material called hog panel that is a very heavy-duty screening used in farming.
Oh, like the mesh, like go...
It's a mesh.
Yeah, okay.
And it can be fit into a frame in such a way that it looks really good.
Yeah.
And it only costs twenty bucks, sixteen feet.
Hog panel.
Hog panel.
Tractor supply.
All right, so you've given us some good ideas on fencing material. So are there other material issues, or is it pretty much the fencing?
I wish you about the, the little entrance steps. We were, we are supposed to have some very heavy winds coming, not tomorrow, maybe a couple of years from now, it just suggests some back-racking from the posts back to the building as just a way of keeping those attached. I've seen some pretty weird stuff. It was on the Cape not too long ago. It's amazing what was flying around. And in any other areas where you have even longer extended overhangs, that there is a way back to the building from that front, just as a, you know, not what the world needed maybe in the past, although we've had our hurricanes, but maybe of the ones to come. Just to, to keep that in mind, this elevation, is this face west, southwest, the one we're looking at?
This is gonna be one in the north. I think that's the street.
The north, correct.
And that is the north.
Okay, well, then, that's probably unless things change dramatically much, I would...
Remember also that the state just updated the New York State Building Code, so everything is designed to the code and jolly.
With our rules.
Right, all I'm saying is as a rule.
What's happening in mine.
Yeah, no, that's exactly, so the code has been updated with what's happening in mine, it's the twenty-fifteen International Building Code, and the rule by the, part of the state when they adopt that is, municipal is really can't go, can't require people to go beyond that. So everything is done exactly to the New York State Building Code. It is completely up to date for climate change. It's been updated to reflect climate change changes.
And this was written when?
The international, the last version, I believe, is the twenty-fifteen version.
Twenty-seventeen, a self-debat from the state.
So, yeah, the twenty-two code is coming out in the fall, October, November of twenty-nineteen of this year, and once it comes out, we can start applying it. January twenty-twenty, ostensibly, it'll be there and take effect. And I was just at a training, they talked about the wind charts, for instance, is your question, and they really haven't changed much, and it's traditionally the Adirondacks and the coast, but only like thirty to fifty miles in, you know, with respect for some, but the real winds that you have to design for aren't here one, and they don't predict them being here.
Two years, I was at Great Camp Sagamore, and it was amazing what some of the winds were doing there that they had not done in a hundred years. So I'm just trying to think of it.
Are there any exterior material questions to anything else?
So, real quick, exterior trim, what do you mind, I was in some, some positive also?
Smart trim?
Oh, then smart trim probably.
Which is composite?
Yes, strictly an aesthetical sort of comment, which is, there are smaller elements on the buildings and larger ones. Trim around the roofs and the gables, and trim around the porches. Some are much bigger, some are much smaller. I saw on other drawings, other than this one, where it's almost always the trim boards are the same width, and it's a little bit self-defeating. Take the larger element, give it the larger trim, take the smaller one and make it smaller, because what you're doing is, it's formulaic, as if the smaller thing at the bottom, the edge of a porch, is the same as a gable. It's a little misleading that it's a...
Do you?
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do, yeah, okay. Yeah, well, look at the elevations again, that's a good comment.
Thank you.
Anything else for Steve, a lot of tech-related, great. He has homework to do. We'll refer back on railings.
Thanks.
I think examples of things that we could look at in place.
That sounds good, yes, absolutely.
Nursery school, update, sort of the concepts.
So, we have a first look at the nursery school, which is a four-thousand-square-foot footprint. It has three classrooms and multi-purpose room offices, you know, and the outside play area. I think y'all know where it's located, and this is a preliminary look at the shape and concept for that four-thousand-square-foot building. This representing the side that would be closest to the parking lot, where we had the entrance basically midway. There's another entrance, which would look something like this. I mean, this is related to women or whatever, it is a concept, and that would be from the street, so there would be a secondary entrance from the street. We expect, the drop-off lane would be on this side. We expect most of the entrance to be there. Every classroom has its own, you know, cases to the other doors, none of which are close to either side of the, either the road or the parking lot. All the classroom exits are to there.
So which part of that faces the parking lot?
This side.
Okay.
And the part that, I, I don't have a plan with me today, but anyone could talk more about it, but it, it actually laid out pretty nicely in four-thousand square feet. I was happy with it. There were a couple of roof designs that we looked at, the nursery school, like this one. Obviously, it involves salon. Was a nice way to handle, you know, what is a forty-foot-wide truss, which if you just connect it, it starts to look like just a big, low-sloped...
More than a lily.
More than a lily, right, so this gives it a lot more interest, I think. The nursery school liked the red color. We also showed them, they didn't brown, for obvious reasons. I think the red color is pleasant. We've got a couple of fences that we're looking at. When you said hog panel, I think this is sort of a little bit more sophisticated hog panel concept. I like it a lot. By the way, I use welded wire mesh in a fence in my own house. Even bigger and cheaper than hog panels, they're like roadways. I use the green, plastic-coated stuff, kind of expands. But this is more of a smaller wire mesh inside of a wooden frame. I'm very fond of it. Another fence that we talked about using is just a more simple picket wooden fence hole, having, I think the elements that we're thinking would work on these slightly smaller project places. There's a fair amount of fencing around the nursery school, because there'll be a lot, but we're thinking that something like this would fit in. The nursery school's looking for a sort of, I might, you know, sort of rustic, a rustic look, but obviously, a building that meets today's standards. So that's a first look at where we're heading on that.
Did I dream that they even talked about having little gardens to play in, or is there...
Gardens?
Yeah, did they talk about gardens for the children?
Oh, yeah, oh, great, I'm sure.
Okay, gardens there.
Yeah, yeah.
So the Little Red School House, which is in fact a book, will have a barn and be gardens, okay.
Little like David's.
Well, in comparison to this whole district.
Claudia, is he on the height?
This is, this is, this is probably wound up about fourteen-foot wall, so I think we're looking at, you know, twenty-five, twelve, kind of, and it's not, it...
Yeah.
Under thirty-foot.
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah. And there's not really a second story, there might just be some entrance of light into the center.
So what are the, what are the pluses and minuses of the rustic look, given that that's a pretty sharp contrast to the plans for the rest of the development?
Well, I mean, they have, you know, there's some vertical siding in some of the townhouses, and I felt like a barn look, I, I think rustic may not be inaccurate. I call it rustic chic, so, you know, it evokes the, the images of a barn, but certainly, in the end, I don't think will look a lot like a barn.
It also does act as a good transition as you come into the neighborhood. There's the property at fifty, which is part of the project now, has a barn in the back, the neighbor has a barn in the back.
A lot of houses in Trowbridge are.
Right, yeah, yeah, I wish I had a barn. So, I mean, that's, that's our first pass at, at a concept that we thought looked good for the four-thousand-square-foot.
I see, yeah. Question, has Trowbridge given any input as harsh concept for landscaping that area?
No, we haven't gotten that far. I'm honest, we just wanted to present a preliminary image to the planning board.
Sure.
And then also, you know, pay attention to the fencing concepts, and then I worked with Trowbridge and Brian to put the bill, you know, this isn't showing the building really on the site.
Yeah, I guess what I was asking, I was just interested in knowing whether the property line is, is, the, the Trowbridge doesn't have anything to do with the inside of the property line, but there will be a landscape concept for it, eventually, I guess.
Yes, there will be.
Yeah, okay.
There's no playground, you know, there's no playground design, I mean, that, yeah.
Sure, I understand.
Okay.
All right, I think those are the major issues we wanted to cover, guys.
Excellent. I'm wondering if we have any more information about how the central building, what do we call it, lot twelve, the building in lot twelve will be heated and or cooled? Is that what it's discussed?
We're, so we mentioned that we're having a viewing building meeting tomorrow, so that is, I would say, one of the main topics of discussion, where we're gonna be discussing our various options for heating and cooling. So we don't know yet, but we're gonna know very soon.
So I'm sure that, and I know that, you know, I tossed out that lovely idea of geothermal, which may or may not be possible geologically, conveniently on that side of water mitigation. The other thing I'd like to follow up with is that, we, we used to think, unless you lived in Lockins Glen, where apparently electricity is cheap, that electric was not the way to go, and now as we look at trying to be carbon neutral in twenty-fifty, we're saying maybe electric is a way to go, because it can be converted over to soil, or solar. So, the, anything that is looking at relying heavily on fossil fuels in the heating system seems not green, so probably will come up in your conversations, but I'll toss that out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Like, our, we're starting from a place of looking at solar, looking at heat pumps, looking at passive house, trying to be green as possible with the money that we have, so that's what we're...
Because certainly that is, right, we're, in our comprehensive plan, it does clearly mention that interest in renewable energy resources, so keeping that, that in mind, thank you.
Just had a chat with Halco, and it's amazing, it seems this changes month to month. Most, a lot of it is improving, but what they are doing in insulation, and what they're doing with glass and windows, what they're doing with roofs, the type of insulation, it's astonishing, so.
It's encouraging, Vicki, it's downright encouraging.
You think so?
Yes, it could be worse. Could be sprayed newspapers still, for goodness sake.
I, the insulation, we're...
And even like...
Including the newspaper I picked up that I cherished, I think I gave it to the Historical Society, they had the murder of, I'm gonna go there.
I distracted you, sorry.
Fabulous, newspaper.
Okay. Anybody else here on the planning board with questions for that aspect in, as they sit before us?
Not right now.
Not right now, no? Who wants?
Hi.
Hi, you might capture some Thursday evening, if that's really...
Thinking there's a basketball game, I'm gonna watch it.
Okay, well, if you all feel comfortable with your presentation, okay, then I think, thank you very much. Appreciate you learning and loving your materials, thank you. Okay, so now we can open up for public comment at seven fifty-two, and we'll follow our standard pattern of, we actually didn't make a standard pattern. It'd been three minutes to speak, or just a generalized fifteen minutes. There aren't so many of you here, certainly could feel like you all wanted to speak, we could, we could do that. So, is there anybody in the audience from the public that would like to... that would like to make comment at this time? Yes, sir?
I have a question and potentially a comment.
Okay.
So my understanding that each of the rental units will have a parking pad, a single-lane parking pad in front of them? Is that correct, or is that not correct?
Okay, could you comment on the parking unit, please?
I think so. I'm going to make Ryan do it.
Okay, thanks.
He's good at that. But with the updated with parking barriers, every rental unit does have a parking spot.
Is it in a general lot? Or is there a parking pad for each?
They're in lots. So there's two lots we're talking about. We're talking about Lot 4 and Lot 12.
Could you point on the...
Absolutely. Maybe just show us the...
Is the question, are they assigned? Is that what the question is, or are they...
No, no.
That's applied to us.
At one point, I thought there was a pad. There was going to be pads for each of the units.
That is what I was...
Thank you.
Okay, so Lot 4, again, is a triplex, a portable rental unit. There are six spaces that are in the rear of the lot that are accessible via a driveway. So there are head and pull-in spots for that back end. But they're in the rear of the lot. Lot 12, the multifamily, portable rental, has a brow parking, and sorry, not just the multifamily, but then a triplex as well as a portable rental, has the brow parking with either a single-loaded or a double-loaded corridor. So you're pulling 90-degree into the space on the south side of the buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That answered my question, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm going to say anything. The parking lot, are they assigned spots? Or do you compete? Like, that first one we showed, there's six spots, right?
Six slots for three units, right? So two spaces.
So two, yeah.
Do I get the first choice? How do I really assign?
We typically assign people spots.
You assign spots, okay.
So where would I put my phone?
Bring it up.
With storage.
And so assigned spots would be true for the Lot 12 multifamily?
Yep.
Will guest spots be assigned, or will those be competed for?
We'll probably put guest parking signs.
Just guest parking, general lot? Guest parking, you too.
Right.
And may I ask, what sort of drainage is going to be around that large lot? What, how is, how old that drain?
I think that we'll definitely, let's look for that answer, Ed, when they submit the water mitigation drawings in general. Good question.
You want to ask?
Oh, you got an answer, sure.
Generally, the majority of the development actually drains inward to the stormwater practice that will be here on the south side of the property. So it'll have stormwater collection, swales coming through the sites. It'll take through piping, go to treatment, and then storage, and the discharging off-site. It's all taken care of on site.
So specifically off that parking lot, that large parking lot, what type of, just basically drain, you know...
We have birotention filters, which actually will treat the water first. And then the larger, you can't see it on this plan because it's very, very light, but in this area here is what's considered a wetland extended detention pond. So it'll do some water quality treatment. It also holds the water temporarily during storm events and seeps it out. So it'll be in here. And then we also have a small practice, similar practice, south of Lot 4.
I think he was asking, Andy, did it come wrong, whether you were going to have like catch basins or sheet drainage off of the parking lot?
We're going to have a combination, yeah. I think we're going to have piping for the main rooms. We're looking at whether we can sheet drain part of the parking lot, or if we're going to pick it up. It'll be a combination.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up, yes?
I'm concerned about the childcare facility. I believe the current intent is to have a single entrance that is locked and key. You know, so separate door, street room doesn't seem to be the right plan in this case. In our schools, you have one entrance where, because the incidents have happened all over.
There's maybe one entrance and separate exits, right?
Right, so when you come in, you'll come into a primary exit entrance with your child. Each classroom will have an exit to the play area that will be locked. You know, that will not...
Like a crash car, for example.
Right, so that the class can go directly to the outdoors, but the public or the parents can only come in through the designated entrances.
And further to that point, the doors, two of the three auxiliary doors that exit directly from classrooms exit into the fenced yard itself. So, which might have an additional, you know, locking mechanism on that gate as well.
Yeah, anyone's watched Home Net Security's Run, Fight, Hide, Tom video? Yeah, it's a terrifying concept. So, good point.
All right, and concern about the fencing. This is a board fence. So if you're immediately in a situation where you've got a child that's missing, you want to go out to look through a fence, it's, you know, going to block your view, that keeps it high behind it. I think, you know, the common practice is to open as much open space as possible.
Is it a lead? Claudia, will you be working with fence design with the experts at the school themselves?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Good, good point. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, Blake Connor, 40 South Street. First question is referenced early in the meeting about some conditions. So after all, I just think maybe we can get back to that, if you don't mind. Thank you for clarification. I assume you received the letter that I had sent earlier this week. Everyone in the board get that?
I'm not sure. I confess I have not reviewed that. It may very well be in my inbox and certainly in your inbox, but I see it in Vicky's hands, yeah.
If you please review that.
Thank you.
One thing I didn't mention in that letter. For this village's sidewalk project, my neighbor across the street, if you don't mind if I stand up and point here. It's not quite on this drawing, but I think you all know that I live here, right? Yep. And my neighbor's somewhere around the bottom of the whole square. They wanted the sidewalk to come down their side of the street, cross over, and then down. Me being here, I was good with that. They had young kids, I don't. Kids come up from schoolhouse lane. The attorney said last meeting that this is not an official village street. However, during that project, it happened to be a street. Because I had asked for that. Both my neighbors who wanted it asked for the sidewalk to be here. And I was good with that. Well, we all know, I think, if you drive down South Street, it's here. And the reason why is that engineer that said that is a street. The crossing has to be at the corner of the street for safety. And he referenced the 500-foot wall that I'd been talking about all along. The one that the attorney said last meeting was, I think it's 400 or maybe 500, but since it's not a village street, this doesn't matter. I think that's not a very strong argument, knowing in one village project, if it happened to be a street, and that's why we have a sidewalk there. So I would really consider that a little bit further and maybe get some more legal guidance on that issue. And then last, he referenced in his response last meeting about following this called a highway by use. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I did look it up afterwards. And I really don't know how it applies to this project. But in reading it, there was one dimension in the highway by use. It was three rods. I had to learn what a rod was. A rod is 16 and a half feet. So a minimum width of three rods is 49 and a half feet. So again, doesn't seem to match that. Doesn't match our village law. I really think this group ought to have a good discussion with an attorney that can make sure that our laws are really being followed. So thank you.
And Bill, that's in your letter, but I, again, obviously...
Not the sidewalk piece of it, but the rest of it.
But the rod pieces.
Yes.
And then I did want to clarify, it was a big point. So, and when we come to old business, we will be reviewing the site plan review that happened for 46 East Main. No, what's the...
44.
Sorry, it's been a while. 44 Main. And in that site plan review, there was a condition. And so that brought up this notion of, right? One of the things, we've talked about this since Rick Giger helped launch us on this review process, that part of the thing that a planning board can do is, if it wants to grant approval, it can attach conditions. And so we had a sort of a boilerplate beginning notion of what that kind of document would look like. That is the document that I was referring to. We have not, as a board, discussed a notion of what conditions made because we aren't, we don't have a final preliminary drawing. But that's what I would do, yeah.
Quick question.
Sure.
We've had...
I'm sorry, wait, is there any other public comment? And then I can close public comment. Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Who actually owns or will own the nursery school?
That is a very good question.
I understand. We own the building, and we set to transfer community nursery school.
So you own the building, okay. Are you imagining a very long paper company, 99-year lease? Say 33-year lease? Say, did you discuss that yet?
We've had it discussed.
Okay.
As long as I need.
What happens, let's say, because of universal pre-k increasing, a new daycare facility being built on 96 that's to be breaking ground by year in April? What happens if the nursery school is not successful? What will become of that building?
We would need to lease it out to another user that will use it for something that is allowed within the zone.
But it is a residential zone, so there's not a lot you can do. There are certain things you can do that are not residential in nature. But it's not ours.
Yeah, right. And good to me... No, absolutely, same here. And remind me that this nursery school, which I know has a waiting list, was, began in '73, something like that? Does anyone remember? Or am I confusing it with the...
That's the fourth generation.
So, yeah, right, okay. But, I mean, it is a good question. Thank you. Okay, yes, that's comment.
How are you going to keep the kids off of going down by the sidewalk side of the school? Is that, that's the path the kids are going to take to walk to school?
Where, that's where the sidewalk... No, I don't understand. I'm sorry.
They're going to go down beside the sidewalk side, right?
You're talking about the woodchip path that's certainly behind the nursery school?
The kids...
Where the buses go, right?
You're talking about the schoolhouse? Oh, schoolhouse, they are not... I mean, it's the same way that kids that walk that road already walk is how they would go, which is then to get to the sidewalk as soon as they can. And then they have to cross. And I mean, I think that that's, one thing on my mind, I'm glad you brought that up, was if we do have an increase in population and foot traffic, how can we get a crossing bar? Because some, you know, crossing bar on Lake Street right now wouldn't be a bad idea. I mean, now, you want to volunteer? But that is, you're right, paying attention to kids crossing is a good point.
I think we're a broad enough should volunteer.
Aren't you on a board to volunteer? Okay, great. Okay, I'm going to officially close the public comment at 8:5. Victoria, you've been waiting to say something, thank you.
Yes, we have had many intelligent long letters by Mr. Willie O'Connor. And to me, I always flunked math every time I took it in all the eight high schools I went to in America. But I underline things in red here, which is, it seems to me, it strikes me as controversial and as fuzzy as the first day we heard about this. Is it 500 feet? Is it 400 feet that we have to be the schoolhouse lane? It makes point after point, and it gives us math. It gives us the research. I don't know that we've ever responded to this properly. And I was wondering if we, you don't have this last letter, could we take this to get some legal advice? Or can we take it to MRB? And to have them look at this and explain it to us that this is as wide as it can be, this is as narrow as it should be? Or what is it? This, to me, has been chewing at this whole, you know, our whole meeting, meeting after meeting. Are, you know, are our roads, and what can we do to make them into lines if they're not? Or are they not to begin with? And if they're not, you know, what's the bottom line?
So Guy spoke, and I would not dare paraphrase him without him present, to that topic specifically. Rick, do you want to take a stab at a... And I feel like he answered that question, though it has not been put in writing as a formal response from the village attorney, but it's on the record.
It started out with a camel in a desert or a steed in Arabia or something. Well, what I'm trying to say, he started out very melodramatic. You know, how are highways or roads, or whatever you call it, with horse and carriage? Why can't these numbers ever line up? Why do we have consistently long, good letters written? And it is in conflict with what we're saying all the time?
I don't actually think it is in conflict.
No, must strengthen this up.
But we have, and it's not in conflict with what we're saying.
This is not...
I think that partly why he was long in it is it's not just pure... You know, there are lots of, there's a wiggle that are built in to the language. There's words like "in general," you know, "things alike." Well, what's that mean? That means that people like Tom, people like us on the planning board, you know, have the ability to exercise reasonable discretion. I mean, if we're unreasonable, you know, that's a problem. But if we're reasonable and intelligent about, you know, how we make decisions of how to exercise discretion, then, you know, it can be challenged, but...
Could be, that embrace...
That was the...
It is on the verbal record. I mean, it's on the record. Guy's response did answer all that, did say all of that.
So could we copy that?
Well, it's the transcript. It's the boarding, and it's on video.
That is, what, on the document?
It could be transcript. No, I think it is on the official public record.
That's that, yeah.
And that'll be what, you know, if ultimately somebody decides what we've done is wrong.
So that's what we're hanging our case on? I mean, that is what we're using as justification.
It's the legal, yeah.
From one of the leading land use players in the state, you know. So it's hard to find fault with that, especially with someone who's had as much experience as he had. But, you know, like I said, there are avenues to challenge things like that. Don't forget that traffic engineers have also done independent analyses. We've got our traffic engineer and then MRB routine of the parking traffic engineer, all of whom agree that the roads are safe and the design is safe. And I know people are going to keep raising the issue, but from our perspective, it is resolved. It has been resolved by reference.
From my perspective, it has been resolved from that approach.
One other thing I just wanted to point out, too, is that remember the lead brief we got from the neighbors? None of this is in there. They didn't take it up. And I don't know where it's been seen, you know. Think this was going to be a big issue. So I'm sort of partly persuaded by that, too.
Well, I guess that fit into old business because it was a bit of something still on your mind. And I'm glad that you brought it up.
Old business, something new, good old business. The stop sign went down on Lake Street.
Okay.
At the, where it intersects with Dorsey Hills. We go a little bit longer for the solidness. It was put in the right place. Same there. Mission accomplished. I requested, ask about that one for you for a second here.
Can you get your bike stuck in time?
My bike was a bucking and a rod once out.
Okay, so I have, I do have a bit of old business, right? So, and I haven't given you this response, and I will, Tom and I apologize. But remember, two meetings back, I think, and some before that, we had talked about the Gail Mott's property at 44 East Main. And it seemed to have been in collective memory that the dumpsters needed to be. Okay, but then I went back and said, okay, have to officially back up what happened in site memory when I poured a new office document. And the condition of approval, the only one listed, was parking lot lineage issue be resolved inside the property line to the approval of the code enforcement officer. And that is it.
Tom and I also went back this week and listened to the audio, and that is absolutely...
Yeah, yeah. The only record.
Was there dumpster ordinance on our books for the, the rest?
The only thing that was found was in the drawing they submitted did show an enclosure for the dumpster, but that was not a legal obligation on their part.
So they, what, are you saying that's not what we approved? It says this.
The, that's the drawing. Well, when we said the conditions, that's.
Oh, no, it wasn't, it wasn't a specific condition because it was actually right in the.
It was drawn in and we approved that.
Okay, so glad that we're on here.
Thank you.
It didn't need any condition.
So that's the official drawing, okay?
On that site plan with the dumpster included.
Conceptual site layout? No, that's great.
Mine too, 100%.
Yeah, if that's the official drawing that was submitted as the site, yeah, great.
Is there a dumpster on the site?
Yes, it's like nothing.
Tight.
Yeah.
It's been moved from the outside, I've seen it back now, and there's two, sometimes it's fully pending.
Thank you.
Vehicles parked right side and the window.
Solid.
I can actually see it because I know.
That's my annotation on there, but.
On the air, memories are good.
My question about the dumpster that's there now is it, it's not exactly clear to me which building it served.
It's been moved.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's downward back to the ice cream.
So, so the, the issue is that the, the tenant is feeling, so there's all this like, who's gonna end up paying for this and is this gonna then be on the back of the tenants? And so I need to make sort of a response as, as the planning board and it's sort of, to me, it's, it's how the landlord mitigates costs with the tenant when their approval before any tenant moved in was that it had a plan with a dumpster and that parking spaces were to be delineated. He's not really, he's waving on their way to say how landlord is gonna translate that cost to anybody. And it certainly wasn't a surprise. And, and that, then I would also say, to what extent is the dumpster necessary? They can answer that if the notion of the, I mean, just saying that out loud because now it's public, watch out. Do you need one? And then the parking spaces, there had also been some, some concern that, that they aren't feeling like they can tow people if it's their parking lot, but, but they can, so I'm just gonna address that the site plan review required you by condition to delineate the parking lot. The plan you submitted had an enclosed dumpster, it was assumed by the park planning board that was the plan you meant. And now, improved plan, and now we've given some time and leeway and now a code officer will help determine when the clock ticks from this official recognition that you are not up to needing your cycle review.
The dumpster meantime has gotten engaged to a very large garbage can and they're very happy to do that. And we should give them a little privacy.
So, so unless anyone has any objections, we'll be proceeding nicely.
I don't think that's issue.
Yeah, oh, do you want this back? Yes.
I, I need a copy because I couldn't, I had to enlarge it so I could read what it said, but. So this though raises another issue that has been brought to me by, you know, a person at the coffee shop.
Yes, it's a term we never done.
Regarding the other, one of the fairly good sized site, for the buildings that the Atlas Bowl is in.
Okay.
The therapy.
Yes.
And in connection to that, this person's memory and I think mine was too, was that there was a pretty extensive landscaping plan that was a part of that site.
For Atlas Bowl?
Yeah, for in the parking lot. That, this person was saying, you know, boy, that's a, you know, unsightly parking lot, why did you guys ever approve that?
Well, it's already there.
The, my memory is that they did have a landscaping plan. And this is another example of how hard it is to sometimes go back and, you know, sort of make sure that what people agree to do is part of the process and follow through.
Which is why we are lucky to have Tom as the codes and second officer because he is doing that.
Yeah, so I just raised that down now to be reminded of it by, by this situation.
Is that with Atlas or was that unsightly?
No, no, it was, it was when, it was when the owner of that old property was, was a parent, became, right. And he and, I'm forgetting names tonight, but Todd, Todd Berlato made a presentation, you know, I mean, it was basically their project, it was a two man project.
And then that's.
Todd and he were the ones who were sort of agreeing to all of the planning. And they had drawings, they had, you know, it was, it was a well presented, you know, effort and it gave us a lot of detail to look at. And I think our approval, I mean, I think Vicki might have been in the chair at the time, was.
I couldn't agree more with what you're saying. The lighting was going to be simplified but replaced with four soft blue sort of shaft lights down to the parking lot. The front was going to have seasonal plantings for all three entrances, the gym, the office, Atlas. Atlas put neon lights in with no one's permit, most, two, three are burned out every month. There's one crooked light fixture in the middle with a dangling wire. They were going to cut the trees until our, thank God, our tree man for the village of Trumansburg stepped in and said, forget it. Not gonna do that. The sign was going to be, what is a legal sign today, you see them all over New England, four foot high. There's the sign, this one, way up there, you know, right in your face before you entered the village. So everything you said, you were right on, we agreed to it. And there was a local landscape architect who did the drawings. She's, I think she's still in the area, she was living with our, the editor of the, our local newspaper. It was a nice plot, trees would be in good shape, soft lighting, etc.
Well, let's, let's pull those plants, let's pull those, let's pull out.
All I'm really saying, well, we should, you know, we should make, look at that, because I could have.
Yeah, okay.
That happens to us way too often.
Be, be more future advocates. But also I think that the sign got a variance. Because it was in the trees, so the sign, you know.
The problem in Trumansburg is if it's illegal and they're long enough, you thrive. You just, that's fine, then it's all fine.
They waited and waited.
I live on the street, I probably live on the mixed, the most mixed street in the village of Trumansburg. And almost everything on it is not licensed.
Are you sure not waiting for her?
Don't go that street, Tom.
Does anyone else? Seneca County, our, it's so bad for them. Does, does anyone have any other old business?
Well, we haven't really gotten very far with 44 East Main.
Oh, I thought we just did, I thought that we agreed that we have to hold them to the dumpster because it was on the final plan that was submitted and thus approved, that they have to do the delineation, that it's now on me to write that statement empowering the codes officer to do his thing, which will then be for you to impose. Yeah, well, no, it's, but then that's also you are just doing your job.
Right.
And we're saying, yes, please do your job. And I don't know if it's 50 days, I mean, there is this notion of compliance and then just is this notion of penalty if one doesn't comply.
Yeah, and that's where I think maybe you and I can work together, you put out something and I'll look it over because if.
I'm gonna address it, have them contact you or say that you will follow up with them, okay, yeah.
Because up to this point, I haven't been using ATF on this.
I'm giving you jaws.
It isn't working well.
Give them a fang.
What fang? I see everyone's pulling their documents closer, does that mean nobody has any new business?
Oh, yes, old business.
New business.
Solar installations, where, how, what guidelines?
In general, in our green spaces and in our roofs.
Oh, very serious discussion.
So I brought that, I brought that topic to the, you were there, to the comprehensive plan and zoning code review committee as a topic and it's all on everybody's mind, so.
Should be a nice tool.
It absolutely can be, but I wanted you to know that you mentioned it last meeting and I said this, in case anyone hadn't been thinking about it, is a very real thing we should pull our community out.
Good. And we get a stop sign.
Okay, should I hold up the big stop sign and is there a motion to adjourn?
Excellent.
Second? Excellent. Ed, more of those.